We'll say the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, the glory, forever and ever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Part one of two. Okay, item D on the agenda is presentation of an audit award by Lori Brody from the State Auditor's Office. Welcome Lori.
Hello. Is this a good spot?
Yep.
Yes, perfect.
I'm back again.
Welcome.
We're glad.
I think I was just here, yeah. I'm pretty excited. Here to celebrate your new finance director. Now he's a veteran after a year, right?
That's right.
Last time I came, I think he was just starting at this position. But I am happy to be here. Thanks for giving me a couple of minutes. I'm here to present the Auditor's State Award with Distinction to the City of Napoleon again. There's a collection back there. I wasn't able to look up how many, but I know last year, I think it was with distinction as well. But I think it's just still important to remember and just remind everybody that it puts you in a really select group. We do like 5,900 audits a year out of cities, schools, villages, anybody basically that spends tax dollars, they have to have an audit. And only three or five percent get the Auditor's Award with Distinction. There is an Auditor's Award as well, and that's like the top eight percent. So this won't even put you in a more select group, so. But I think it's just important for you guys to know that you have to still meet the criteria of a clean audit every single year. And I'm going to read the list because I love the list, so I'm going to read it one more time. But you have to complete, to get this award, a comprehensive annual financial reporter, CAFER, within six months of fiscal year end. And you have to have a clean audit, which are no findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, single audit findings, or questioned costs. You can have no other financial concerns, which that covered most of them in the other line there. But you also get a management letter, and that's not really anything material by percentage-wise, by dollar amount. But it's where we can put comments of things that you could do differently, you know, that weren't a big amount or whatever. But your management letter to receive this award can also have no comments related to ethics referrals, question costs less than $10,000, lack of a timely report submission, reconciliation issues, failure to obtain the timely, timely single audit, or findings for recovery, or public meeting, or public records issues. So I like the list because it covers it all. And I just think it also reminds us that, you know, the award is the finance department leading the way. But I think it does still take all of your employees to do all of those different areas. Because if that doesn't go well when it gets to finance, you know, you've missed something. So I think it's, please thank all the employees. I know some of them are here. And I think they have to strive every day for that accounting excellence. But again, Mayor and Council, I think you guys do a great job because you're the one accounting for every dollar in the budget. And it takes people that are on top of it also to get the award. But we also have to thank your great finance director, who I've known since I've been doing this job for four years. And he's always done a great job everywhere he's been. But I just want to thank your finance director, Kevin, and his staff for doing such a great job. So I'd like to come in person, just so I can give this to you in person. But thank you for doing such a great job. We, the Auditor, really appreciates it. Congratulations.
Do you mind coming back here and presenting that? And maybe get some pictures here?
Yeah. I'd love to celebrate it.
All right, okay, is ready? One, two. And one more. One, two. That's worth it. Thanks.
Here you go, sir.
Thank you very much, Lori.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
I like the good work. I like coming every year, so.
We do.
I'm in Napoleon, I'm just at Waterville, so I don't like coming down there. Listen to see what's going on for a little bit.
Congratulations, Kevin, and the rest of your team. And I know it is, for all the other departments as well, they play a big role in our finances here.
Well, thank you. It's a great, blurbage. You're right. I mean, there's five ladies in my office that deserve a ton of credit. It's also all the other departments that work with us. And it's just an honor to continue the success that Joel accepted the award last year. And I will go back even further than that. Some of these processes and procedures go clear back to Greg Heath and his leadership too. So we cannot forget the past of that too.
Right. Congratulations.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to item E, approval of minutes from September 19th, 2022, regular council meeting minutes. In the absence of any objections or corrections, those minutes shall stand approved. If hearing none, they stand approved. Item F, citizen communication. If there's someone in the audience that would like to address council on something that is not on the agenda, you can step up to the podium and let us know what you would like to discuss. And if you are on WebEx, feel free to type in the chat box, and we will read that periodically. Okay, moving on to item G, reports from council committees. G1, the Finance and Budget Committee did not meet on September 26, 2022 at 6:30 due to lack of quorum. Item G2, Safety and Human Resource Committee met on September 26, 2022 at 7:30 PM. Dan?
Yeah, we handled three items at that time. Recommended to council to change the urage of overtime rate qualifications. Also recommended to council to partner with the Center for Child and Family Advocacy, for Comfort Dog, who I think is back in the peanut gallery there right now. And recommended to council to increase the municipal court bailiff pay scale for the year 2023.
Thank you, Dan. Item G3, we'll go back to the Finance and Budget Committee, held a special meeting on September 30th, 2022 at 7:00 AM. And we recommended to council to approve the third quarter budget adjustments. Recommended to council to approve upgrade for authority utility program. And recommended to council to set November 11th, 2022, and November 12th, 2022, as the dates for the annual budget review. Item G4, Technology Committee did not meet October 3rd, 2022 due to lack of agenda items. Moving on to item I, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions. If I1 is ordinance number 052-22, an ordinance authorizing the municipal bridge inspection program through ODOT. Have a motion? Second. Chad?
Chad?
This is, we had explained a couple of weeks ago, this program will allow us to have our bridges inspected through a program with the state of Ohio, specifically ODOT. They hire consultants to do those inspections for us. There's no cost to us if we participate in the program. However, if we do not participate in the program, we will have to have them inspected and have to pay for those services. So the contract with ODOT is for one year. I just request council pass legislation to save us those costs.
All right. Thank you, Chad.
Yep.
Any questions or comments? Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item I2, ordinance number 053-22, an ordinance authorizing the Ohio Department of Transportation to perform necessary work within the City of Napoleon, Ohio, regarding the resurfacing and bridge repair project on State Route 110. Have a motion?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Chad again?
This is another program working with the state of Ohio, specifically ODOT. ODOT was planning to resurface State Route 110 from State Route 109 up to the city's corporation limits due to the condition of State Route 110 or East Malmi Avenue inside the corporation limits. I appealed to them to continue their project up to State Route 108. They agreed, and they will cover the majority of the cost of that. Right now, I don't have a final estimate. But the preliminary estimate that they sent me was $225,000. But that's probably between 30% to 50% of what we would pay if we had to do it ourselves. So they just requested this legislation that states that we will participate in the program with them and then be responsible for our portions.
Thank you, Chad.
Yep.
Chad, I'm assuming that's like a mill and fill kind of job, isn't it?
Yes, there's some minor drainage work, specifically adjusting catch basins, adjusting manual castings that are in the pavement. But yes, specifically just mill fill. Make it pretty.
Make it pretty. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Marissa, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Okay, item I3, ordinance number 054-22, an ordinance supplementing the annual appropriation measure, supplement number three for the year 2022, and declaring an emergency. And suspension is requested. Does a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Kevin?
Thank you, Council President. These are the budget adjustments that we do quarterly that goes to the Finance and Budget Committee. We're asking for approval under suspension so that we could close out the books for the end of September rather than waiting for the three reads. This particular ordinance states of the line items that were increased throughout the budget. Some of the talking points or the higher points I wanted to point out was is that we had to do an increase because of a continuation of judge costs, meaning that when we had a transition of judges, that we had visiting judges that we had to pay for in the midterm. There's a retirement on there that was not budgeted at the beginning of the year. So we have to do a budget adjustment for the vacation and sick payout time. There are some fuel charges on here. At the time they're in the budget of 2022, we weren't familiar that our prices were going to be where they're at. There's also an increase on there, a larger increase for a possible police car purchase. And then there's two others I want to point out. One is for a purchase of a transformer, electric transformer, which we'll be talking about that later. And then the final thing is there's a larger one on here for a vehicle. And that was because we had a vehicle that caught on fire, and we had to replace it, and we didn't anticipate that being replaced for 2022. So if you have questions about any of the other items, I just wanted to hit some of the higher ones. Be more than happy to answer them. But again, I asked this be passed under suspension so we could close the books sooner rather than later.
This will still keep us in the requirements of receiving the award again because Lori's still here, so I'll make sure. You still good, Kevin?
I believe so, yes.
I'm going to make sure. All right. Do we have any other questions or comments?
Make a motion for suspension. Second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll for suspension.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
All right. Okay, no other questions or comments? Marissa, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Okay, that has passed under suspension on first read. Moving on to item I4, ordinance number 055-22, an ordinance authorizing the finance director to make appropriation transfer, transfer of appropriations from one appropriation line item to another appropriation line item pursuant to ORC Section 5705.40 for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022, as listed in Exhibit A, and declaring an emergency. Suspension is requested as well.
Make a motion?
Second.
Okay. Kevin?
Again, thank you, Council President. This is another third quarter adjustments that we make. The difference between this one and as the other ordinance is is that this one here, we move budgeted numbers from one line item to another instead of increasing our total budget. So a couple of the things I just wanted to point out here larger is that we do have budgeted a few line items for different funds called undefined contingencies. And those are, what they mean, they're undefined, and they're for contingency use. It's a way of, for a, it's a way of having things budgeted in case you need them. And there's two larger line items on that, the 500 fund and the 510 fund. We had a few where we had to take out of the undefined contingency because of electric rate study, and also because we had a pipe repaired to water treatment plan. And that's a good thing that we do these undefined contingencies. I would just state that as we move forward and do the budgeting year to not cut those from the budget. So, but I ask again for this to be under suspension so that we could have these changes done with the line items, and then we could close the books in September.
Perfect.
And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions specifically about any of these items if you have it.
All right. Thank you. Questions? Okay, we need a motion for suspension.
Motion.
Second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll for suspension.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yep.
Molly?
Yes.
All right. And Marissa, please call the roll for the ordinance.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
That has passed on first read under suspension. Item I5 is resolution number 056-22, a resolution authorizing expenditure of funds in excess of $25,000 for the purpose of purchasing a pad mount transformer for the City of Napoleon Electric Department, and to award said purchase to Peak Electric Incorporated, and declaring an emergency. Suspension is requested here as well.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Thank you. Okay, Joel?
Thank you, Council President. So Greg apologizes he couldn't be here today. But this has to do with purchasing, the purchase of a new 2,000 KVA transformer, pad mount transformer. These are very hard to come by anymore, and our inventory is just about out. And we need these in order to, if one goes out, to put people back into power. And we got to have some on the lot. There, not only are the lead times way too far out, but inventory is just low overall. It's becoming harder and harder to borrow or purchase from somebody else that has one on the lot. So in doing some research, this was the size we needed, and this was the only company that could deliver something within a reasonable amount of time so we can have one on the lot. There are two others that are ordered, but at this moment in time, you may have heard that there's some inflation issues going on.
What?
In the electric, in the electric world, it's worse than, than the rest of the world, I would say. One of the worst. And that's, you know, these transformers are, are more than doubled in price. And these are big, they're very expensive. As Kevin mentioned, we were going to talk about this in the budget adjustment that you saw. It's about $72,000 for one transformer. And any other given year, it would have been $35,000. So that's where we're at in the world. And this, this really is the reason for, request for suspension is you really need the inventory. So, you know, Greg knows it, I know it, and you all know it too, hopefully. And then, but that's, that's the reason for the request for suspension.
How far are we up before delivery?
I think Greg said last time, eight weeks, was it?
I don't remember.
Yeah. And any, any other time, they would, a lot of people don't have them on the lot, so they have to actually manufacture them. And, you know, you're in line. And they're every bit of six months out, if not more, for transformers of this size. So I think Greg, if I call correctly.
I think he did too.
By the, at least by the end of the year, is what he, what he had mentioned, so.
That was a pretty hot topic at the AMP conference last week. And there's people from all over the country there. And I would say that was one of the top three things that people were talking about. And I think I had heard them say if they needed to build one, normally it'd be like 25 weeks. And now they're, you're talking two, two and a half years, easy.
Yep.
So if we can get one now, I think that's a good idea to do that.
I think not all communities have an inventory like we do though, correct?
Uh, they, they should.
They should.
They should.
Don't we have a little bit extra in our inventory?
Um, it's, it's about what we should have. Yeah, we don't, I don't think we have any more than what's needed. Yeah. You always got to have something on hand for when a car.
Correct.
Goes off and hits a pump station, generator. You know, that just happened. You know? Or, you know, transformers do get hit, poles get hit. You just got to have your, you got to have your stock. And if something goes out, you can't rent or borrow or anything like that. And these, you know, larger companies are out of power. They're going to be out of power for a long time, so. I think it's pretty important that you keep that stock. And this size of transformers is, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call it a rarity, but it's an uncommon, you know, you don't see them a lot. Good news is, people are using them for the right reasons. They're growing, businesses are requesting them. So we're, that's why our inventory is getting low. So just need to replenish it. And realistically, you're going to pay for it eventually. It's, it's a necessity. So it's a cost to do in business. And, and as Greg mentioned too, this money gets recouped when it gets deployed. So unless it's one of ours, and then we have to. So it's, either way, it's being put to good use.
Thank you.
At what point does the excess reflect council's recent decision for $50,000 instead of $25,000 now?
I'm sorry, can?
The, the legislation is in excess of $25,000. It's now 50,000, right?
Yeah, that is true. Yeah, that is true.
That was passed without emergency, if I recall, so it's not quite effective yet.
Yeah, that's right. 30 days.
Do we know when?
Not yet. Not right now.
Was, didn't that pass third read last meeting?
Last council meeting.
With a couple of weeks, I guess.
So it'd be 30 days after that?
Yep. And that's all I have to say, unless anybody else has questions.
Any other questions or comments? Hey, we need a motion for suspension.
A motion.
Second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll on suspension.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Molly? Yes.
And Marissa, please call the roll on the resolution.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
All right, that has passed on first read under suspension. Moving on to item J, second readings of ordinances and resolutions. If J1, ordinance number 050-22, an ordinance amending a certain section of City of Napoleon Personnel Code, specifically Section 197.16F3, Schedule of Observed Legal Holidays, also amending the City of Napoleon Employment Policy Manual, specifically Policy 14.3, Recognized Holidays. Have a motion?
Sound move.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the second read, requesting second read on recognizing Veterans Day and Juneteenth as holidays. I should say recognized legal observed holidays, or what's the definition? One of those, yeah.
All right. Have any questions or comments? Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, that will be moving on to third read. If item J2, Resolution Number 051-22, a resolution approving the provisions of a certain collective bargaining agreement between the City of Napoleon, Ohio, and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO Local 3859, for the term commencing from December 1st, 2022, through November 30th, 2025, authorizing the city manager to execute the same, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Joel?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is the resolution to enter into a new contract with the HAFSMI Union. As discussed, we recommended the, or we went through the collective bargaining unit and the city, went through the IBB interest-based bargaining process of negotiations. We believe it was a good success. There, i- in, in contract negotiations, everybody talks about the, um, you know, the wages. And that's, that's kinda what, what grabs everybody's attention, but, uh, in doing IBB, you go through this process and you, and you try to outline some of the issues. It, it, it works better for, uh, keeping and maintaining relationships between labor and management. So, um, there were very few issues since we've, this is a pretty seasoned, uh, contract. Uh, we got through them. The, the, um, one non-wage issue, I think, that has a, a little bit of an impact is that, uh, for each call-out, right now, uh, the employee gets two hours automatically. That is, that was up to three. Um, but other than that, there weren't very many, um, you know, monetary, uh, consequential monetary items. So, uh, to, but to get to the, the main part of it, uh, the wage increases, uh, requested are three and a half percent for the first year, three percent, and then three and a half percent. It's a three-year contract. Uh, we did do a carve-out for some of the electric employees, and, uh, those that carve-out resulted in a seven per- seven, seven, and seven percent for each of the three years. Um, and just to explain on the record why that is, is because, uh, what we discovered in this process is that, uh, we knew this, uh, ahead of time, but it has just gotten so, so much worse uh, that, um, uh, the wages for linemen specifically and, and, and other associated type of positions that we have named in the contract, um, were so far below the other communities and the private sector, let alone the private sector. Municipal, uh, wages for linemen are, are typically below the private sector by a significant amount. Um, in this case, when we did a survey, we, we looked at other communities, a lot of AMP communities and, um, other communities that are outside of AMP, just part of APPA, and what we found was, uh, was pretty staggering that, uh, Napoleon is pretty, pretty low near or at the bottom of the list in terms of pay scale. So, um, this, uh, seven, seven, and seven is really just a, a correction uh, that's been kinda missed over several, many, many years. Um, they just fell further and further behind, so, um, what that seven, seven, and seven will do, will get that wage rate up to a competitive level compared to the, uh, communities around us, and, uh, will help with retention, uh, and, uh, attracting new employees. Uh, which you probably heard also during the AMP conference, uh, there's a, there's a worker shortage too, aside from inflation, and, uh, that's, um, linemen are, are becoming harder and harder to come by. Um, and then, and you could say that for any profession, really. Um, but, but linemen are, are really, really specialized. Um, I think the employees that we have are doing a phenomenal job. Um, and I'll touch on that in a little bit, why that is, but they do a phenomenal job, and I think you all know that, recognize that, so. Uh, that was the, uh, that was the reason for the seven, seven, and seven. Other than that, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Is the seven in excess to or in lieu of the three and a half that the rest of the HAFSA is giving?
It's separate, so it is just seven, seven, and seven. There's no adder.
Any other questions or comments? Marissa, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Doc D?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. That will move on to third read. Item K, Third Readings of Ordinances and Resolutions. We have none this week. Move on to item L, Go to the City. L one, Discussion or Action, Liquor Permit Application for Familia Guerrero LLC at fourteen oh six Scott Street, Napoleon, Ohio. Joel?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, this is just a liquor permit. I think you heard from the, uh, you know, we all heard from the business owner uh, when they asked for the approval to have the traxing permit, uh, come to the City of Napoleon. So this is just the state liquor controls uh, way of putting it in front of City Council now, and this is one of those items that where no action is considered approval, so, uh, if you have any questions.
Have any idea when they're gonna open over there?
I don't. I have not gotten any word back, so.
I drove by. I see they are doing some work in there, so. All right, can we have a, uh, motion to approve? Oh, we don't need that. Never mind. It's approved. Item L two, Discussion or Action, um, discussion regarding an amendment to the Keller CRA. Joel?
Thank you. Um, this was a request from Keller and the CIC to change the CRA agreement because there's a name change to the company. You know, they're not using Keller Logistics for that, uh, specific CRA. They'd like to have that in a separate company name, so, thus the request for the, uh, change of name on the CRA.
And if I can interrupt briefly as well, there was also an increase in total capital investment and the square footage of the building that is to be built, so. Just a couple of minor edits, but otherwise, um, same, same agreement.
Both increases, size of building and, and outwards.
The size of, the size of the building, if I recall, was
From one hundred to one fifty?
Yeah, one hundred to one fifty, and then I don't recall what the, uh, cap- capital investment was prior, but now at
Six and a, six and a half?
Six and a half.
Yeah.
So we need legislation for that, um, direction.
All right. Someone like to make a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation?
I'll make that motion.
Go ahead, Ken. I'll second it.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Doc D?
Yes.
Mom?
Yes.
Okay, item L three, Discussion or Action on Recommendation to Accept the Proposed Healthcare Plans for twenty twenty-three. Joel, you got that one too?
I'll, I'll take that one. Thank Council President. Um, so, on a yearly basis, the healthcare costs from BORMA is reviewed. They go over their, their issues, their, their expenses that's gonna take place with this coming year. We are a pooled group um, and of multiple communities, and so this past year, they've suggested that we, that our plans that we are involved with, Plan Two and Plan Three, as in the, uh, attachment to our minutes here, is an average increase of like four and a half percent to up to six and a half percent per community. We were able to save at least one percent because of our wellness program, and also because of how our claims are, however, how it shakes out that we end up with a two point two five percent, um, increase to our monthly premiums for the two plans that we offer. And then we just asked that, uh, you accept the proposed healthcare plans for that, um, for twenty twenty-three. Keep in mind that as that increase goes up, then the split, which is eighty-seven point five percent is paid for by the City of Napoleon, and then twelve point five percent is covered by the employee. Those get adjusted with the increases as well, so. We were happy with the percentage of increase, the way things have been going up. Um, we are very blessed, uh, at this point. We're certainly happy with how BORMA is performing, and again, I would, uh, I would suggest taking action on recommending and, um, accepting these, these, uh, plans.
And this recommendation comes from a, um, like a committee, and who is, who all is on that? Do you?
Well, the Healthcare Cost Committee. We have representatives from all, um, departments, so there's a police union, a fire union representative, HAFSA representative. There is a representative for appointing authorities. I was that person this year. So we have discussion from various departments about these rates, and it was unanimously voted on by the Healthcare Cost Committee to accept these rates in the committee.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone have any questions or comments regarding this?
If I may?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you see on the screen here all the different members of BORMA, and having that wellness program, you see the one percents and the credit renewal. We were, and out of that and the participation rate, um, we were, well, we weren't the highest, but, I mean, we were, we're up there ninety-five percent participation, so, um, what we're doing is working to one percent, and then, you know, I see all the other communities that don't participate. They're not getting that, so it's part of the deal.
Thank you. All right, need a, uh, motion to accept the recommendation.
A motion. Second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Doc D?
Yes.
Mom?
Okay, item L four, Discussion or Action on Recommendation to Continue the Wellness Program as it is.
Council President, I'll continue with its discussion from the Healthcare Cost Committee. We, there was a discussion about the wellness, and it was voted upon again this past year to keep our wellness, uh, our wellness plan as is for the participation, and that we continue with the wellness plan for another year in twenty twenty-three. It's worked quite well for us. As Joel has up on the monitor there, Napoleon is above ninety-five percent, which is critical because we do get that renewal credit for that. And there is a, um, incentive for our employees to, to get their wellness checks on an annual basis. Um, it's shown that it is, it's proven throughout the BORMA that it is really effective in catching things early on some of, not our employees, but the group's employees, and, uh, again, I would, uh, ha- accept the recommendation that we continue the wellness program as is.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding this? All right, need a motion to accept?
So move. Second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Doc D?
Yes.
Mom?
Yes.
Okay, that has been approved. Item L five, Discussion or Action on Recommendation to Change the Verbiage of Overtime Rate Qualifications. Joel?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we, this was discussed at the Safety Union Resources Committee meeting. Uh, Brittany also apologizes she couldn't be here today. Um, she had a family matter. Um, the, what was discussed was the verbiage for how overtime is, uh,
Calculated.
Pardon?
Calculated.
Calculated, yes, thank you. Uh, for non-bargaining, uh, members. So bargaining unit members give an eight-hour shift. If you work over that eight-hour shift, you get, you get overtime. Anything beyond that, a given day shift. Um, for non-bargaining, and according to FLSA rules, um, it's forty hours worked. So if you have a holiday, um, or a vacation, or something else scheduled where you're not technically working, then, uh, if you work past, say, a twelve-hour day on your shift, you don't get, uh, overtime for any, for the extra four hours of an eight-hour shift. Um, it's time worked, so, but, and then if, but when you work forty hours, then anything over that forty hours would be then considered overtime. Um, that rule was changed, I, I, I couldn't tell you, maybe six or seven years ago. Um, and it, I, I will tell you from, from my experience and what I've seen, it's created some, uh, you know, little disparity between amongst the ranks, I will say, uh, bargaining unit and non-bargaining, because there's not parity between, uh, how the overtime is calculated. Um, so it was, uh, brought to the committee. The committee recommended, saw the, saw the, the value in, uh, changing it back, so there is parity amongst all the different employees, and, uh, um, you know, this, this recommendation would be to, um, change the, to the new verbiage, um, to include eight, eight hours of continuous, uh, work in a regular schedule. Anything over that would be considered overtime, regardless of if they have a holiday on that day, or a sick, sick day during the week, or, or a holiday, or, or a vacation time. So, um, I don't know if I explained it well enough, but I'm talking with some of the department heads, that was, uh, one of the items that, uh, um, I, you know, I wouldn't say plaguing, but it, it does create a little bit of, uh, you know, it's not animosity either, but it's just a, uh, an equity thing amongst all, all. Not everybody's treated the same, you know, it's not, not everybody's treated uh, in the same manner, and it creates a little bit of, uh, uh, it's just a little disparity that, that this would correct, so. Um, not sure if anybody else wants to explain further from the committee?
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, um, and this is for all non-bargaining, not just the police department, but any non-bargaining members in any department, including Kevin's department and, uh, other departments within the city. And, um, the, uh, officers that are present today shared with us last week how a lot of people do, especially in the police department, do not even wanna move up to the top positions because of this situation. And we have people that are close to retirement age in those leadership positions right now, and there's other officers that do not want those positions, and this is one of the reasons for that.
Thank you. Dave?
Uh, it was also discussed, um, a lot of times when they get in these overtime situations, or where they're putting in a lot of extra hours, it's when we need them the most, and, uh, they run into situations, gee, I'm gonna be here. How many extra hours, and I'm getting paid straight time instead of time and a half, and that does come into a little bit effect of uh, people's willingness to do that, understandably. Um, and that's part of the reason why, uh, that should be corrected, in my opinion.
Thank you. Any other comments? Chief, do you have anything?
Thank you, Council President. And for me, this was a big deal. Uh, this, uh, without a doubt, in my, uh, experience, has had a detrimental effect to our agency specifically. Uh, when this went into play, this caused significant, uh, issues throughout our agency. Uh, we were at a time at that moment where we were trying to keep a dispatch center open. Our staffing was low because of, you know, empty spots, and when you're working outside of a classification, like in dispatch, trying to keep it open, this is a personal experience, and then you have Friday off because I was doing other things on my Friday. That was at straight time, so you're coming in, working three AM to three PM at straight time because you took a Friday off when you're trying to help keep a dispatcher open, or from, uh, or trying to keep another employee from getting forced into it. So for me, on this issue, it's kind of a, a three-pronged concern. One is the personnel thing. Uh, there's issues, uh, with just equality throughout the workforce. Uh, these supervisors are working sometimes less than the employee they're supervising on a given day, in certain circumstances. The second one always comes in with recruitment and retention. You know, that's always been a focus for me. Um, obviously, we've talked a lot about that in this room. Um, as I'm trying to, that's not just at the entry level, that's at the command level. I'm at a time in our department's history where we've got a significant amount of retirements that are on the horizon, and how do I get people to come up into those ranks? And when you lose things that you have at the lower rank, it becomes a harder decision to whether you wanna get promoted or not, and, and time off is, or, I'm sorry, overtime is definitely one of those things. I don't, I don't think it ever had the intended um, reaction, or the, the intended effect that, you know, maybe at that time, which was reduction, because we've never forced employees off due to our scheduling. So we've always paid overtime, but the problem is, they can't take a day off early in the week because they're working this overtime, but it can, it gets paid out at time and a half, maybe on a Monday, or I'm sorry, on a Friday, at regular time. So then the operational side is, uh, and I, I think there's a couple supervisors that'll test this. It makes you think very, very closely as to whether you wanna volunteer for overtime, that maybe one, the only other officer working who's had four twelve-hour shifts or three tw- whatever the case might be, is if it's knowing that you've taken time off at the, at some point during your week, and you're gonna do that at no overtime cost. You know, you're gonna get paid straight time for that. So that's really kind of the, the whole reason why, you know, I've been working with Joel on this for some time, and, uh, Laney, prior to Brittany, um, trying to figure out a, a way of maybe possibly getting this changed or adjusted. So that's kind of, is there questions for me, or?
Yeah, chief, I'm glad you brought that up. This was Laney's idea, so we're just
It has been under discussed, I mean, honestly, uh, the department had already talked about it, or at least, you know, I have, uh, for some time, because this has been, this has been an issue since it went into play, when it got adjusted, your, whatever timeframe that was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
We do need legislation for this.
Okay, I just have a couple thoughts. Um, I was not in the committee meeting, so I'm kinda hearing a lot of this, um, firsthand right now. I heard a little bit, um, prior to this meeting, um, and being somebody that has worked on both sides, being a, a union employee and then, um, a non-union employee, um, just thinking of, there's benefits to both, and there's things that I miss, you know, that, um, when I left the union position, and it was a very tough decision for me, looking at, okay, or, you know, weigh my pros and cons on, okay, these things I'm gonna lose, but these other things, you know, maybe look more attractive to me. And, um, and I'm not saying this isn't a good idea, I just kinda wanna throw that out there. If we're saying one of the reasons to do this is for equality, I, hopefully, we're not setting a precedent that later on down the road, maybe, um, the other side is gonna say, hey, we don't have what they have, and we should have that, and there's not gonna be a differentiation between the, the two sides. Um, just wanted to kinda think about that a little bit. And, um, the other thing is, this is for non, or all non-union employees now. Does it make sense in the police department, or maybe fire department, safety services, and maybe not in, in other, um, departments? Is it all, all or nothing? Okay. And I know we've carved out some things for like the electric department, and the, the last thing we were talking about is that an option for this, if it makes sense to do? So, I guess we'll need the answers, just kinda wanna think about it. We'll have, um, you know, three reads, and that's coming up, but.
One, one of the things that they had said, I, I don't know if, I don't know if it was made clear, but if they took a day off earlier in the week, and let's say they took a vacation day, so they took eight hours off, and then it comes to the end of the week, and it comes to overtime, they're getting paid straight time because they took that week off.
Right.
Most industries that I know of allow that to be overtime if they take a vacation day. This situation that we have, that would not be overtime. That would be straight time, and that was, that's where some of the conflict's coming in.
And I've, I'm in, I've been in some industries where it was the way where it didn't matter. If you worked a minute over eight hours, you were getting paid overtime, and then a lot of places that I've worked have changed also. Um, I mean, I've worked in a couple different banks, and all of them are exactly that way, where you don't get overtime, and unless it's, you've worked forty hours. So say you had Monday off because it was Memorial Day, but you worked Saturday, um, you're not getting overtime because you didn't work more than forty hours. You got paid for more than forty hours.
Even if you took a vacation day?
Correct.
Yes.
It's only if you work forty hours. And I'm not saying which way is right and wrong, I just been pointing out.
I've never heard of them.
Yep.
Mr. President, if any, um, I think it was kind of interesting, we got to hear from Aaron Duffin from Engineering, and he brought up a really valid point that he's called out at different hours in the day, pulled away in the middle of the night, and, you know, that takes away from his time too, and that's something that, it may not be a safety service, but it is a service to our city.
Right.
And I was like, hmm, that, that kinda was like, yeah, you are putting in that extra time, and you should be adjusted for that. So that was one. Um, and then I think for the safety services in particular, um, one of the big points that hit home to me was, it's not so much quality, but it's retention.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what got me was, we're gonna be losing some really And that's what got me, was, we're going to be losing some really, really awesome people in our departments for safety services if we don't ante it up like we did for the linemen. So, that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate that.
And Council President, if I may?
Yes.
I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is affect somewhere around 10 people?
If you count safety services, it's probably going to affect more than 10.
Well, safety services, it would only be...
Three.
Three.
Three. I mean, to me, as a non-bargaining employees, it's not really going to affect my individuals. I don't foresee that, because typically, they don't, we don't get overtime.
Yeah.
We do the work necessary during a timeframe, but we're not 24/7, right? I guess my, my thoughts of this is, and I'm not against it, but I have seen in other places where I've worked, that people do take advantage of this situation, and this is just food for thoughts, whereas if they work a lot of hours during the beginning of the week, they call off on Friday. And that could happen with this. I would just suggest, though, that that doesn't delay your decision, that would have to be looked at by the supervisor on a case-by-case basis.
Right.
Well, if that happens, you just change it back. It's non-bargaining.
You're correct.
Right.
If that becomes an issue...
You just change it back.
Then you would just change it back. But I have seen situations like that, not in the city, in other places where, it's a miraculous, they call off on Friday after they've worked over, you know...
They've worked almost 40 hours, yeah, in the first four days.
Yeah.
Right. Chief?
Yes, Council President, just, I appreciate the conversation, because that's really what we were trying to do. First and foremost, I can say for, with 100% certainty, my agency, one, fire, this doesn't affect fire, they have no non-bargaining, is that correct? Your salary.
Yeah.
So, salary's different than non-bargaining, and their captains are in their union.
Okay.
So this would be primarily construction, myself, and finance.
Okay.
All overtime is approved by a supervisor. All overtime is looked at, and on our agency, and this has been a practice, has been in place, you know, to go back to what Kevin talked about, beginning with his award, these are practices that started a long time before me, for accountability. Not only are the, each overtime request evaluated by the supervisor, in this case, myself, is we actually attach it to cases, and know exactly what case caused that overtime, and with that comes all the case investigation, so you know whether, yeah, that shouldn't have cost me two hours of overtime, there's not enough work there, or maybe it did, time of call, things like that. But every overtime request in my agency has a case, some sort of association with it, whether it's drug, whether it's alcohol, and there's a supervisor approval. So the unions have to have the command officers, command officers have, I have to sign off on that internally.
Right. Great, thank you. Any other input?
Quick question. I don't know if you would have this number handy, but maybe by a first read, is there a way to get, if this were in effect this year, what the cost differential would have been?
I can try to work something up for that. I mean, since we're talking about so few people, we could probably get that within the next two weeks.
I guess it would be pretty minimal, is my gut thought, but I think that plays a factor too, if we're talking about just a small change, that could potentially lead to a big benefit, why wouldn't we look at it? So, yeah, if we could have that by first read, I think that'd be great.
I'll see what I can do. I mean, I would just, disclaimer on that would be is, that people have said before that they're not going to work it if they know it's not going to be overtime.
Right.
Or that would, it would probably be higher than what I can calculate, but we can certainly try. Look for that number.
Thank you.
That's a good idea.
I think it would benefit you two to have the cost allocations amongst the funds. You know, like, what was it, safety services, obviously, general fund, but finances split, and engineering is split, and I think those are the only departments that have non-bargaining employees that would be affected by this.
Council President, as far as, as far as, from our agency, there are times I'm sure that individuals have not taken overtime. That's going to be a hard number to come up with. But the culture in our department, and I think I can, you can talk to any one of my employees individually, is about teamwork and helping, and that's where this really comes out as a concern. It's not that, it's really the dollar that matters, it's about, but it does matter when it comes to, am I going to get up at 3:00 o'clock in the morning?
Right.
And I think that would matter to any one of us, you know, but their goal is to try and help. Our staffing is two to three typically, dispatch, and we've talked about that, so any kind of teamwork that we could have, and assist, just helps those employees who, not only the individual who's getting paid a little bit more for the, for the work, but also the employee who's not getting forced into a time off, or into a 12-hour shift, that they might have a family member taking, you know, some sort of issue, birthday, vacation, whatever, insert whatever you want, but would rather not work that overtime.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Need a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Steph Davis?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Moving on to item L6, discussion or action on recommendation to partner with Center for Child and Family Advocacy for a comfort dog.
I'll have to turn this over to the chief.
All right, chief.
And I do, chief, I do recommend that you hold the dog while you give your talk about that, so it's just...
Can we get a picture of him and Kevin?
Wasn't the comfort dog the acting finance director at 1.2?
Acting finance director a week ago.
While you were...
In the chair?
Yes.
That is correct.
Come on up.
Hi, Hank.
Counsel, I'd like to introduce, most of you are aware, this is my wife, Roberta. My wife's professional career is through the Center for Child and Family Advocacy. In other words, for us, the most common theme that you hear that agency addressed with is victims' advocates. So, they had a comfort dog, they've had one for some time, had to retire due to medical issues recently, and this, I'm going to say, is a brainstorm of our fine city manager, who's about to depart this tonight, but him and Laney and ourselves, we're having a serious conversation about employee wellness, things like that, and some ARPA money, and like, just making sure that we've got employees taken care of, probably eight or nine months ago. That's the picture, he's the poop boy. And, so what came out of that conversation is, we came up, there's a lot of departments nowadays, I won't say a lot, there is a, there is a trend in law enforcement to try and partner with agencies and develop comfort dog programs. There's a lot of different roles a comfort dog can take on. Napoleonic Schools has a comfort dog currently, St. Paul's is looking at getting a comfort dog, more in the educational world, and kind of their counseling parishioners, things like that. Another one that we see a lot of comfort dogs on, and what my wife used in her agency prior to Hank, is in social work in crimes of violence and trying to do trauma-related care. So, with that, you know, Joel asked specifically if we could look with the center and see what we could come up with. Of course, my wife, it's another dog, so she jumped all over it.
We're empty nesters.
So that's kind of where we're at. So what is a comfort dog? And I, I don't want to bore you with a bunch of details, but that's kind of what got started. Her agency started, and we kind of, things kind of happened a little bit fast, because one of her interns actually had an insight as to where they could get a dog, that was a breed that was recommended by Franklin County Sheriff's Office. Franklin County Sheriff's Office is one that's going to do our training, and I say ours, because all three of us have to go through it. They provide that training for free. They were the first program in Ohio back in 2017, and I think only the sixth in the nation at the time. Now, we are in low numbers across the nation, as far as agencies. I don't have that exact number, one article I read that was about a year old, said it was underneath 50. To show you kind of what Northwest Ohio law enforcement's about, two of those agencies are right here in this area. Defiance County has a current program, and we're looking to start a program, obviously with council's approval. They call, Franklin County called it the New Wave Policing K-9 Program. There's a lot of different benefits to it, as I talked about, St. Paul's and Napoleonic Schools, my wife reached out to Napoleonic Schools program, Heidi Mekus, and she's the one that kind of put us onto the trainers and that type of thing. St. Paul's, I reached out to Pastor Marsis, because he's also talked about this openly with me. He supports this one tremendously, and I'll be honest, if we ever find ourselves in the unfortunate day of, where we have a mass issue or a significant issue in our community, you're going to need more than one or two dogs. And that's where we see all three programs coming together. Some concerns with using, I'll call them school dogs, you know, dogs that are not law enforcement or center dogs, primarily is, revolves around, you know, confidentiality in what we do for a living. My wife's business and mine deal with some significant impact on crime victims, and some individuals who are suffering some severe trauma, and to bring in someone from the outside through a school, no, you know, it's just, you got confidentiality things, and just a different style of training versus being around kids all the time versus a crime As far as training, internally, what, or first of all, internally what we want to try and do is, this would be open to all of city. As you can see, smiles get on the face every time the dog comes around, honestly, I, it was kind of a surprise to me, and I think my guys have seen me, or heard me say that in my agency. I was for it, but just, it wasn't necessarily something that was on my horizon last December when we were doing budget type of thing. And every day he comes in, now they're more interested in when he's coming around, they actually want the boss around. That's been a unique plus, you know, they want the boss around. So, what that looks like, assist other first responders, so there's some things our employees have had. Law enforcement, make no mistake, we deal with, you know, we deal with a lot of stuff. Fire, no mistake, they see a lot of stuff, they're dealing with that too. So that would definitely affect, hopefully in a positive light, taking care of our own employees in the public safety sector. But, you know, oftentimes, we forget about the operations guy, you know, the burly guy who might be dealing with something, and/or, like we've had, and unfortunately, you know, they can check and attest to, where do you have a workplace injury? Some sort of significant injury that employees have seen or gone through, and that's where a comfort dog could also come into play, along with that. So our big goal externally is trauma, mental health, and crime. Is there anything you want to add on that?
No, Hank, he has been with us since eight weeks old. We went down and got him from the breeder. We wrote a grant at our agency called One for One, and that was not given to us at that time, we were not elected. I went and talked with my finance director, and I had posted to our board. Sheriff Engel is on our board, he's a handler of their dog at the Defiance County Sheriff's Department, and he and my board were 100% for it. So, we had the money and the budget. Hank is a $2,000 dog, so when he plays rough with my other dog at home, I'm like, Danny, he's $2,000. You were 50 from the... But, in all honesty, he's been acquainted very well to both agencies, we're taking, I'm taking him to meetings like this. He's getting exposed to kids, I've already seen some of the magic happen in the lobby area, introducing him to younger kids. The Fulliam Button Area Clinic took care of Conway before, so there, they had agreed with our agency to give us the same reduced rate, so that's a blessing too, for us as far as that goes financially. So, it just, it does bring happiness, brings a lot of stress too, making sure he's getting out on time, but I hear that a couple leg in the back likes to take Hank out for walks and stuff, and there's a couple of girls that volunteer. I think it's good to get outside of the office during the day myself, but working-wise at the agency, we do have our center, our Child Advocacy Center, where we do our forensic interviewing, and that is where we see, one of the biggest numbers that caught my ear, one of our trainers is a deputy that is at Franklin County, he's lieutenant there. His wife also runs a CAC, and they have a dog themselves. The number from full disclosure, not having a dog in the room is 87%. When you have a dog in the room, every child has 100% disclosed what has happened, and that has led to quicker prosecution. So, for me, that was a no-brainer at our agency, if we can offer that to the children that are having a hard time. Other testimonies, like Dave said, Sheriff Engel shared that, you know, if there's a horrible accident, and even the tow truck drivers that have to come and help and clean up, there was one that was just immobilized, and he brought Scout out, and she just laid, you know, her head in his lap, and he was able to finish his job, because what they saw on the road. So, I think Hank is going to be an awesome addition for everybody, and with Dave and I being trained as handlers, and he's in our home, we can continue that training throughout, because a lot of people say, why are you as administrators doing this? You're not the one who's performing the CACs. Well, I am there, we can take them in there, or law enforcement will be there. I'm, he's going to get used to the sheriff's department, so he has two trained handlers, but Aussies are very intelligent dogs, as we've already figured out, he knows how to get out of his cage, so we've figured out how to rig that, so he can't at night. And Terry Federkey has given me some really good feedback as a vet on how to keep them from wanting to herd constantly, because that's what they're bred to do. So, we've already started working on all of that, and I'm excited.
Dollars and cents, I mean, that's what it comes down to a lot of times, and, you know, dollars and cents, I don't see any change in my existing budget. Tracking Luke's, can Luke are multipurpose dogs, budget, you know, most of the care on canine, or most of the cost in canine programs, once they're established, is care. As long as they stay healthy, that's a manageable cost. To put it in perspective, we're underneath, currently underneath $1,000 with Luke. We're not anticipated to go over $1,000 with Luke, and this, so what we're proposing is basically a mutual agreement between us, where we would share costs with the center. They're not looking for any recovery of costs that have been already taken under their wings, but we would, like, ongoing, you know, we'd work into some, some sort of language that Billy would approve on, whoever the new city manager, finance director on. That would include some sort of payment back and forth, whoever wants to take primary, primarily vet costs, I mean, that's what it boils down to. With most law enforcement-style canines, typically you can get food donated, and most everything else that comes with that. That's pretty much it. The training is free with the, with the expense that, or with the disclosure that there's always food and travel, but they're not charging us. Training looks like four, 16 weeks? 16 weeks, roughly? Where he started obedience training, then we go through quarterly training. At a year, he would, he wouldn't necessarily be active until about a year down the road.
Certified at a year through Alliance...
Through, yeah.
Alliance for Therapy Dogs.
Correct, which is a national certification, and then, much like Luke, we would then have to keep that certification up, okay? But again, once we get through that first year, it's just honestly on to the handlers to making sure, and any kind of vet costs. There are some proven facts, I, I went through a, kind of in closing, I went through a webinar thing through Lexipol International, which is our policymakers, I have a fire department and myself both utilize it, it's a national policymaker, and they put on a presentation, and there's some proven facts that it promotes dopamine release, you know, lowers blood pressure when, when you're in a situation like that, increases obviously feeling of support. So, that's sort of the case, helps personnel open up, and I think Sheriff Engel has talked, talked to me and my wife about that, that is something he's seen personally, since his program started, is that it's absolutely made a difference in individuals after post-critical incidents. So, interestingly enough, after Joel, when I went through this, some of the program types fits right into... types fits right into that. One of the big program types that Lexi Poll talks about is partnering with an outside organization, typically a nonprofit, you know, so we're checking that box. Agency benefits, I've said from the day I've gotten promoted, I'm about community. This is one of those pieces at a very low cost in the grand scheme of things. I, our canine vehicle currently was scheduled to get replaced this year. Car got canceled. So that one's already budgeted. It'd just be maintaining a cage in my car, which typically doesn't have a cage in it right now anyhow. Outside that, there's no cost that I can, that I have on the horizon. And then, you know, any kind of sharing this resource with other agencies, whether that's kids, family, you name it. I could see this opening up doors in your nursing homes and things like that that allows residents to connect with an officer who might be out on patrol or something like that. Is there any questions I can take? I don't want to take up lots of time, but I just kind of want to cover it for those who weren't at the meeting.
Obviously Luke is already on, on, on our, our staff and Hank's trying to get there.
Yes.
Obviously they do two different functions.
Yes, sir.
Is my assumption, right?
Yes, sir. And we, at this point, will not be introducing both of them into the office. When Luke's around, you know, we're consciously, next year it won't matter so much because Luke's going to go to midnight shift. But right now we're being very cautious. He's a puppy with literally no training other than what my wife and I are trying to do. What, what we planned on, since it happened so fast for her agency, my intention was to donate my time and just do what, since it was already going to be in my house. And then we started talking with Joel again more recently to take it on from an agency level again. Did I miss anything, Joel?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks, Steve.
So we need a, another.
Motion is sufficient.
Pardon me?
A motion is sufficient.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Okay. Marissa, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Dan.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Item L seven, discussion or action on recommendation to increase the municipal court bailiff's pay scale for 2023.
Pardon me, I'm trying to get through all.
Looking at a bunch of dogs.
This request came from the court, from the judge and went right to Brittany, which was discussed, I believe, at the last Safety and Human Resources Committee meeting. What you have in your packet is that what this would amount to. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I'm not sure I'd really be able to. It's just her request to up the pay for the bailiff position.
Just, I can add, Mr. President, just a couple things. One, the, you know, just a relatively short time ago, you know, we authorized changing the part-time bailiff and probation officer into a full-time combination person. Well, as of now, that person still has not happened. And she said that she's expecting that employee, I think mid-October, does that sound right?
Yeah.
Finally have that person onboard. And then again, the pay issue is similar to additional responsibilities that this person is taking on, especially in the area of technology in her office. So that was one of the reasons for the, for the request.
My assumption is we're just moving the pay scale. We're not moving the pay, the bailiff from the top of the current rate to the top of the new rate automatically, correct?
I, I was not at the meeting. I don't know what the discussion was.
I think you're right, but.
Restate your.
The, the current bailiff is at the top of the pay scale. We're going to up the pay scale. We're not going to put the bailiff at the top of the new pay scale.
I believe that was correct. We're, we're upping the capability.
Upping capability for overtime, okay.
I, I would just ask that you get clarification on that, not being at the meeting.
Right, I just want to make sure because, you know, we're into the packet, I saw the numbers and they make, they make sense. I just want to make sure we're not, I'm not sure I'm good to bailiff his right now. I have no idea. I just, I don't come back in two years and go bailiff's top, top scale again, going to scale again. Wait, wait, we just did that. That's what I'm trying to avoid.
I did not get that impression, but probably we need to find out.
Just make sure, right? Okay. Yeah.
Isn't this something that would have been discussed at budget time? Or no?
Probably.
Is there a reason that it would be, need to come now? Is there a reason that we are discussing it now instead of in November when we talk about all budgets?
It was at the judge's request to have it.
She's having a hard time retaining.
And it's.
She's having a hard time retaining somebody for that position and the pay is low compared with others if I remember.
They had, they had someone and that person backed out last minute because they got paid.
More somewhere else.
Somewhere else.
So we'll have some things answered for first read and, okay. So it's just a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation.
A motion.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Dan.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly. Yes.
Moving on to item L eight, discussion or action, approval of plans and specifications for the Main Street and Orwig Avenue Waterline Improvement Project.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is something that was budgeted. The plans are done, they were done in-house and now you can see that the engineer's estimate is $440,000. And just requesting for this approval to be advertised.
All right. Any questions or additional comments? We have a motion for approval.
A motion.
Second.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Yes.
Ross. Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly. Yes.
Okay, that's been approved. Item L nine, discussion or action to approve the upgrade for Authority Utility Program.
I'll take, thank you, Council President. The current utility program that we use is from a company called CMI and they have went to like their 2.0 version of the utility software. It's called Authority Utility Program. And this, what we're currently using now would no longer be supported in the middle of 2023. We've already went and upgraded to finance and payroll prior to even myself being there. So this is the next progression. And I'm just asking for the approval of the upgrade. The cost of that upgrade is going to be $72,000 to $73,000 for the upgrade if we approve of it prior to January 31st. After January 31st, then the cost rises to over $90,000. If we not, if we opt not to do this, we would just have software that's very pivotal to the operations of the city that would no longer be supported. We could also look at other software companies. I would prefer not to at this point, look at other software companies because if we do that, I would want to move all of our software, finance, payroll and utilities together to the same company. And at this point, I would prefer to stay with CMI at this time. So that decision would be a three to five year out decision if we ever wanted to change to that. This is something that we would certainly budget for next year. So there'd be no budget increase at all for this year. We're just asking for the approval from council to do the upgrade.
Thank you. Do you know when the last upgrade was done?
For, for the utility program, it was probably five, six years ago. I'm going to say at the most that the contract was extended to. I know that the current finance director, Mr. Heath, did, did do that prior to his leaving. But that was, that was to go to the finance and payroll authority programs, not the utility at that time. And now this is the utility, I wanted to catch up with that.
Okay, thank you. Anything standard for any, any system that you use, whether it be a cell phone or your systems you use on your computers, there's always going to be upgrades and/or if you don't pay for them, then you, you don't get the, the new things and things aren't compatible?
I'll be very honest, it's a hard pill to swallow that you have to do this at a high cost, in my opinion. But it's not any higher than going to a different utility program. You know, they sort of hold, hold the cards there where if they choose not to support, we certainly can still use it. When they falter, we could be out of luck.
Right. Okay. And like you said, it'll give us time, the next three to five years to kind of see what we want to do later on.
That's correct.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, need a motion to approve?
So.
Second.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Yes.
Ross. Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly. Yes.
Okay, that's been approved. Item L 10, discussion or action to set November 11th, 2022 and November 12th, 2022 as the date for the annual budget review. Kevin?
Thank you, Council President. These are the dates that we all remember, where we have the department heads come in in front of council or everyone from council that can come, that can make it. These dates, the, is Veterans Day on a Friday and then Saturday is the 12th. And typically we start about 8:00 AM and we roll until 3:30, 4 o'clock on the first day. And the second day, we try to go from 8:00 to noon and make it as smooth as possible. But that is, we'd like to set those dates if it's accompanying to, to council to have those completed. They do go in line then that once we're done on the 12th, that gives my department a whole week to finalize the numbers. And then the following Monday, a week later, is council that we could have it ready for first read. So there would not be like last year where we had to call a special meeting to get the third reads in. We would not anticipate doing that this year.
Yeah, so you present on the 21st and you have two more reads in December. You have to come in in a special just to get the budget done then in December. It works out that way. Fridays seem to be a pretty good day for some of us. I know the bank is usually closed on, on Veterans Day, so it's easier for some of us to get away. So I know it's not working for everybody, but it seems to work out for the majority of us in those two days that have worked fairly well in the past. It's two long days. It's a long day and a long morning. So probably more so this year, we'll get through it.
You checked with Ken. Do you have that day off, Ken?
No, Ken never has a day off. He's retired. He can't take a day off being retired.
No days off, no vacations.
No. Anyone else have a conflict on that day at all?
I'll be working part of it.
All right. Don't know if, we don't really need a motion to do that, do we?
Set the dates.
Yeah.
Might as well.
Yeah. All right.
A motion.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, Marissa, please call the roll.
Yes.
Ross. Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly. Yes.
All right. L 11 is discussion or action, Efficiency Smart Program, refer to Electric Committee and BOPA. Do you have any?
Just the reason is because of the contract expires, the three-year contract expires this year. So the discussion would be to review what has taken place and decide whether or not you want to renew or do something different.
So when we were in Columbus for the AMP meeting and meeting with the people from Efficiency Smart, they were not going to be able to make it on that Monday for our, our committee meeting. So we were going to switch it to the following Tuesday, which would be.
That's the 11th.
The 11th.
We would need BOPA onboard to do that, right?
Right. So if we can tentatively set that for the 11th on that Tuesday and reach out to Board of Public Affairs members, see if they can, they'll have a quorum for that.
Yep.
Is that something you can do for us, Marissa? Thank you. And then item L 12, discussion or action, approval of the interim AMP board representative for Napoleon.
Since I'll be leaving, Mr. President, AMP, and, and the way it is right now is typically the city manager sits in as the representative on the AMP board for Napoleon seat with the electric superintendent as the backup or alternate. Now it'll be up to council to decide who you want to be that individual. I mean, I do have recommendations, but I think there are a couple of options out there. So all that they need is a motion of council to, if council wants to appoint somebody different than interim city manager or anybody else or the electric superintendent. There are some options, but I think it's important to have a strong presence on the board if the board seat is to be retained, which the election is next year. So I think it's, if it's important to council, then I would, I would recommend having, at least having the discussion or the look at, at appointing somebody who could fulfill that role, at least through, you know, possibly January as the new person is brought on. Whenever the new person comes in, they can then take that role back over or however you want to handle it. It's up to you.
How many known AMP events are between now and end of the year?
The next board meeting in Nov, in October, sorry, in October is in Bowling Green. So it should be a pretty easy one to attend. There's the November, you know, mid-November board meeting. There's the December meeting, which is usually early. And then January meetings in the, in the middle of January. So there are no conferences or any other type of travel other than to Columbus for board meetings on November, December, January.
I would like to hear from the electric chair, if you have some ideas, thoughts?
My recommendation?
Recommendation?
If Kevin would be agreeable to doing it, I would recommend Kevin. I think it was, it was good knowledge for you at this past conference. Good for the finance director to be aware of, of our position with AMP and, and all of our electric.
Well, I appreciate the nod. I would certainly accept if that's what you want on a temporary basis. I agree, it's something that I, I certainly learned a lot at the conference, made some pivotal, I think, connections too. And so I would be more than happy to, to fill in on a temporary basis if council approves.
Wednesday AMP meeting in November?
If I see the calendar correctly, it would be the third Wednesday and Thursday.
So 16, 17?
Yeah.
Not nine, 10, the two days before the budget meetings?
Correct.
Yeah. We don't shoot ourselves in the foot. I'm not trying to say no, Kevin. I don't have to go to Frankfurt for two days and then come back and then jump into budget.
It's good to know. Yep. Yep.
Just my thought.
I, I was wondering about, and it's nothing against you, Kevin, but I was wondering about somebody who was in the field that might have a little more experience in that, like I just wonder if in that position, that would be a little better fit and I mean no disrespect at all.
Not taken.
Because, yeah, because he actually has experience with the, he has the electrical knowledge to go with it. He would have connections with those people and I think, I think relationships are, if he has relationships. He would have connections with those people, and I think, I think relationships are, are, if he has relationships with other people already built, that is what I think, I think we need that a little more, little bit more to help retain that seat.
Thank you. Anyone else have any thoughts?
I was thinking along those lines at first too, until we were, you know, into networking and meeting with everyone. And Kevin's political background, I think, is helpful with that.
I have no, I have no problem if they wanna go down together too, for, you know, have two people, you know, you know, just have one tag along with the other. But I think having somebody in that knowledge base would be a very, as well as the relationships that he already has with other people would be an important consideration.
Along those lines, Joel, with Greg Nat being here, how many, I mean, has he built relationships with AMP and with other?
No, he, no, he hasn't, sorry, I didn't, he, he really, I mean, he has to some degree. But I wouldn't say at the board level.
Right.
Where I think, and, and at the staff level. But I certainly think there would be value to at least having, if it's Kevin, to having somebody else tag along that would have the technical knowledge. I think that person that, that would be good to tag along would be Todd Watchman. And I just say that because he has built some trust and respect with a lot of the staff members, especially with the industrial substation rebuild and a lot of the other things throughout the years that, that he's been involved in directly with AMP. So I don't, I don't think there's a bad pick. It, it, it's just a matter of having that presence, I think is important. So if I were to dovetail off of what you said, I think, I think having both people.
I totally, I think Todd would be an excellent choice also. Do you think he has a little bit better relationship connection? Because there's only gonna be four meetings or five meetings before the election's going to occur.
It's in September, right? Yeah, the elec- the next year's election will be in September.
Okay, well, yeah.
So it would just be kind of a sit-in for the time being, so. Either or, I think it would, there's still value in, I think, in my opinion, having maybe multiple people attend, which happens with other communities too. I think the City of Bryan, for instance, has a, a person that's gonna be the likely succession plan for Nathan Gardner. And, you know, I think, you know, Derek has been there a few times, he was at the conference and is getting to know people, so. I think it's always good to have a robust presence there if, especially now with some of the board changes, and I don't know if everybody knows what's happened at AMP, but there were, there are a couple of board seats that have changed. So there will already be some new faces, and that's been a common, not a complaint, but a, a, not even a concern, but a noticeable difference in AMP in the more recent years is the amount of turnover that happens at the board level. So I think having a robust presence at, at these board meetings is, is meaningful.
I like the idea of sending Todd down with Kevin and then to back up and explain stuff to Kevin, then also have that, that carryover. So when, the assumption is the new city manager becomes the new AMP rep, and then you send Todd down one or two meetings with new city manager, so then you have that nice, a nice bridge there, and Todd can be that bridge for both. And I think that might be a good way to do it. I think Kevin could do the great job by himself, I think, I don't want to send Kevin, the new city manager, down for an AMP meeting, you don't have to, right? If you have Todd do, you know, Todd, okay, basically you're there for the next six, six, six events. You know, maybe he goes to Washington, he probably not, but that's, that's kinda where we're at with it, as we, as we see him talk about it.
Great point, and if I may jump back in. You know, there's a lot of qualities that Kevin brings to the table that other people can't. Todd is good on the technical side, but there's legislative items that really come, that rise to the top. Kevin would be great for that. The Finance and Budget Committee, that's the first topic that's talked about, so, and all the committee meetings, we're gonna go through them. So the, I mean, there are very important issues that, you know, Kevin's skillset and experience definitely brings, you know, the positive impact of that. So having that tandem of, of that, of, of the two would be, would be really good. And no offense to Greg, I mean, it's, it's just always been that way, city manager, superintendent, as the, as the alternate. Greg is a, you, you know this, and you know, Greg is a very good, talented, experienced electric superintendent. I don't think the AMP board is his cup of tea. And I don't think he would be opposed or offended if I, if I, if I say that.
Right.
It's, it's, and, and he knows it, it's just, but I think Todd has embraced, because he was at the last board meeting as well, I think, I think he, he would embrace it well too if he was partnered up with Kevin.
Now, if we're talking about having two going there, would that be going to the board meetings themselves, with AMP allow?
Yeah, yeah, you can sit in, you can have a, a person in the crowd.
You can bring a guest, you can bring a. Okay.
Unless there's a, typically, and they, they save these items for the very, very end of the meeting, where they gotta kick everybody out.
Okay.
So, you know, he would have to get kicked out for a short period of time at the very end of the meeting, which would only be on the second day.
Okay, and while it's, we were at the conference, I did talk to a lot of people on the board with our situation, and a lot of them met Kevin and we talked about, and Todd was there. And just trying to get everybody's opinion on which way we should go. And I, I agree with Lori that I think having Kevin there, he, he made a pretty good impression on behalf of the city, not that Todd didn't, but I think just in the legislative things, in the finance world, I think it'd be, I'd feel very comfortable having Kevin be the, the main one, and if he can bring Todd along with him would be helpful. Any other thoughts? So we need a motion to, to select our AMP board representative for the interim?
I'll make motion.
For?
Kevin and Todd.
Thank you. But it'd be just Kevin, right, and Todd will be invited by?
Yep.
Is that right?
Yep.
Yeah.
I'll second Kevin.
All right, Marissa, please call the roll.
Yes.
Ross?
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
All right, item L-13, discussion or action, farewell to Napoleon City Manager Joel Mazer, appointment of acting city manager. Do we still have the comfort dog here for this?
Is that for Joel or us?
For Joel, he's gonna miss us. All right, Mr. Mayor, you wanna kick us off with anything?
I can, I don't know if you wanted to go first and go over his list of accomplishments.
I'll let you do that, I've talked enough today.
No, does Joel wanna do that?
Oh, Joel wants to.
No, no, go ahead, go please, please.
Okay. Well, I'll, since I have the floor.
Yes, you do.
I'll be blathering on a little bit, so don't mind me, and Council President, it's, it's up to you if you want me to keep going. So I'll make sure too that the new person knows that when they address the Council President, they do this too, so.
Should I start the timer?
Yeah, you got the timer. No, it's just that it's been a very humbling experience from day one, that, that I would be, you know, given this opportunity. It's, it's a very high honor, not just to be considered for the position, but to even be selected for the position. I know it's a great responsibility, and it's nothing that I've ever taken for granted. You know, I still kiss the floor every day I walk in the door, and you've probably heard me say that before, so. I've never taken that for granted, and never will, will always remember it. And it's hard to leave a place that you love. I always enjoyed my time here, and everybody here in council meetings and mayor has been so good to me. So it's really, really tough to leave a place where the grass is so green under your own feet. Why on earth would you go somewhere else, right? But that's, you know, I, I couldn't have done anything that I've done without the support of, of city council and, and staff and everybody else, and the community for that matter, and, and the mayor. And that is, the, the support is really the, the recipe for success. So, you know, and as long as it makes sense, you gotta have your checks and balances, but there's gotta be support and positivity and everything else that comes with it. So what I did in that recipe for success, what I did is, and, and this is really more so for you than it is for me. I put together this list of, of things that have happened over the last five years and nine months. I highlighted a few of them, I wasn't gonna go over every single one of them, I won't blather that much. But, you know, I mean, some of the things that are, that are really important, I mean, negotiating that agreement with the Napoleon schools and establishing, you know, positive fruitful relationships is really the lesson there. Same thing with the comfort dog, I mean, you're establishing relationships with agencies that will be very, very long-lasting and have a big impact. And not just the, the physical nature of the community, but the people that are affected by it. That, that agreement with the schools also dovetailed into a Safe Routes to School grant, something that you just don't, you don't get without a partnership. So having those partnerships with, with the agencies that you're working with is super important, which kinda leads me into the economic development piece. It's not just the agencies, but it's also the business community and, and the people. So, you know, I highlight an increased number of CRA agreements, and that may or may not be an accomplishment. But I think that the noticeable thing out of this is that, if you recall, those that were here, Napoleon, from what I was told back then, had a reputation for not being very business-friendly. I think that's fair, I don't think I'm offending anybody here. But it, it, it was that way, and I, I think by addressing it by way of actions speaks very loudly. And, and it's very important to maintain that business-friendly environment if you're to continue on and prosper. You know, stagnation in growth is, is not good for a community, in my opinion. And that is, that is because, you know, it, it hurts the business community, it hurts the people's income. And, and, you know, some of your businesses, a lot of your businesses rely on growth for, for their income, so. You know, and just going through, there are a lot, there's been a lot of industrial growth, a lot of commercial growth, a lot of housing growth as well. A lot of it had to do with cities, city getting involved and city councils' approval on, on a lot of things. And one thing I'll point out to that is this housing fee moratorium. You know, it's a little thing that goes a long way that developers really do appreciate. And, you know, in, in the business world, you're putting together a business model, a business plan, and you, and it's all about numbers. So anytime you can chisel off a few of the numbers for them is, makes them successful too. A short-term incentive turns into a long-term gain for the city. That's economic development and growth as a long game, because what you're building is a 50-plus year asset. That's gonna be flushing toilets and flicking lights on for 50 year, 50-plus years. I, I did highlight on here the, we managed a very large income tax refund. That's a, that was a, that was a significant blow to the city's budget, and, you know, it was, that was a tough one to manage. We came out of it, and, and right now, city finances are probably as, as good as they've ever been. So no pressure, but, but they are, they're good, and, and that's something to hang your hat on. And the electric department, the RP3 designation, we talked about the electric employees and what a good job they do. I mean, that, that's, the electric department is something that separates Napoleon from a lot of other places. You know, the formation of AMP Transmission and Napoleon being the first in the door on that. You'll see that, Kevin, when you go down to AMP, what kind of an impact that's really having. It's, it's part of, and you probably saw it in the conference, that's a part of the AMP business structure that's growing the most rapidly. I'm gonna skip over a lot of these, you know, in the police department, obviously Chief Mack, he came through, I'm going through department by department. But the K-9 unit bike patrol, school resource officer, in-car cameras, the facility improvements, implementation of body worn cameras, and, you know, kind of restructuring a little bit the department to have the supervisory position, all great things that, that help with the longevity of the department. Engineering, I didn't, I don't have a lot on just under engineering, because there's so much you could have under it. But I didn't add every road project or anything like that, I'm just a, a couple of things that were of note. And, and just know that engineering department covers every department. So, you know, when you see, you know, path projects under park or parks, or, or you see the water treatment plant, wastewater plant, rebuilds, the pool, Chad had a big hand in, in helping those projects along. Some other things, you know, the, obviously the wastewater plant rebuild. I did note in here too, we always seem to forget this, is that we renegotiated the long-term control plan. And that's a savings of millions of dollars to the sewer fund. Not that the sewers don't need to be addressed at some point, but the, at the rate it was going, these sewer rates would be inflating incredibly right now, not just because of the inflation, but the amount of projects that they had stacked into this long-term control plan. And ripping out and replacing sewers was just, was just gonna be an astronomical number. Personally, and I think council would agree, is something that wasn't necessary to do at the time. But the projects that we picked out were very much necessary in replacing pub stations and rebuilding the wastewater plant. Now, the other sewers that are on that list will need to be addressed at some point, undoubtedly. But it's not something that was an immediate need that had to be addressed right now. And I think that in the long term saves the rate payers a lot of money. Yeah, the pool and the clubhouse, the path project, you know, that's, that's a little personal for me, because that was something, when I came into the doors, I recognized that there was an improvement that could have been, that could have been used, and I think there are some people in the community that agreed with that. Unfortunately, I won't be able to enjoy it, because it, you know, I'll be leaving and moving. Then the citywide master plan, I think that was a good event for everybody in the community to go through and kind of spell out the vision, the long-term vision for the community. So at some point, that'll have to be revisited, see how it's going, but by and large, we're kind of operating under that way of, you know, what, what the vision was, or at least trying to. Code enforcement was another big one for me, I think that's had a positive impact on the look of the community. I've gotten a lot of compliments about that, establishing that, although it doesn't make everybody happy, unfortunately. But fortunately, it makes the silent majority of people happy, so that's a good one. Lot has happened in HR, I won't go over that, IT, that, IT, the IT department, I think, gets overlooked sometimes. It's a, you know, hidden little gem of a staff of two that are high-impact, do a great job, respond quickly, and really have the, the network system integrated well. And, I mean, just look, you know, before we weren't, we, before the COVID, we were recording the council meetings and, and posting. So, you know, they're, they were a little ahead of the game, and I think they've made a lot of fixes that will be very long-lasting and impactful for the city as an organization, so. There are, there are a lot of good things, I think, in the five, five and a half years. And like I said, this is more for you, I know that not all of you were here for all of these events, but at least, you know, if somebody says, well, what did you do when you were on council? Then you can, you have some things that you may have forgotten about that you can point to, a list of, well, there's a lot. And, you know, it's, it's a, I think it's a good list. There's a lot of high-impact things that have happened here, and the only last things I'll say is, if I have some parting words to give, it is, keep building on your strengths. So you know, you know what you have, that's good, and don't take for granted the good things that you have. And keep building on your strengths because of that. And keep building on your strengths because that's, you know, that's where you shine the most. So, and I say, "Don't, don't take for granted the good things that you have." Being, not being from here, me and my family appreciate a lot of things about this community that I think are sometimes overlooked by people that are from here. No offense to anybody, and I'm not pointing anybody out specifically, but there are a lot of charming things about this community that really need to be cherished that other places just don't have. They just simply don't have it. And I think that, you know, building on the strengths and don't take for granted the good things that you have, this has been, I think, a period of stability in this community, at least on the council end. I know there have been some changes, wacky things that have happened, whatever, but you overcome those things. And you face those challenges, you overcome them. And, you know, stability is a good thing. And, and it gets recognized. And, you know, not to be cliche, but success breeds success. So, when you have the city succeeding, that's the, that is good for everybody. Not just other agencies, but for everybody involved, for all parties involved. So, I would just say that keep it up. Because I think things are, at least on the right path right now. That's all I have to say. Thank you for allowing me to blather.
Thank you, Joel. Do you wanna kick anything off, or you want?
Who are we gonna do it?
Go ahead.
One of the hardest things to do in leadership, Joel, is what your successor is gonna be asked to do. And that's take a good organization and keep it good. And the other high compliment I can give you is, you're gonna be tough to replace. So, Joel Mazer's do not just grow on trees. So we got our personnel committee has their work cut out for us. I think you integrated so fast in the community, I think that paid off dividends for you throughout the last five-plus years. And when you don't have that, it's very noticeable on a very early basis. So, we really appreciate that. We do have a small token of appreciation here for you. Thank you, Marissa. Can I come over here? Again, I just, you've made so many changes, I'm not sure what to, what to present to hopefully show kinda some of the changes you made for us while you were here.
Kinda nervous. Hey, how about that? That is cool. Awesome. My gosh. Wow, this is a...
You're keeping everyone in suspense.
Yeah. No, looking at it all, there's a lot in here. There's a lot going on. This is really cool. This covers all the, all the departments.
Yeah.
All the services we provide in the city.
Oh, well, those that you changed while you were here too.
Oh, right. I see that, these poker chips. I was wondering. Two for the ball markers at the clubhouse. Well, thank you. This is actually a, we'll never part with this. This is, this is really, this is really awesome.
Let's do a quick shout here for, to Brian. Is that right, Brian?
We gave all of council.
Yeah, yeah, all council.
You did?
How's that look?
It's good once more. He stands up.
Alright, everybody ready? Dan, move left or right one. There you go. One, two, three. And one, two. Awesome. Yeah, thanks so much. This will always be.
I gotta tell you, I called, I called Lori one morning, she said, "What did we get him?" And she said, "Uh..." Come on, Lori! It's your thing! So Brittany had a big part of that. So we appreciate all Brittany's help with that. Have to call you out, but I thought that was kinda funny.
Thanks, yeah.
Okay, any other comments or anything mentioned along those lines there? I'm sure we can in the next session here. So we'll go around the table. So, Kevin.
Joel, I just wanna publicly say thank you for the last year, that you've helped me about. Best of luck to you and your endeavors. The hard part for me is not only am I, we're losing a city manager that I respect a lot and everything that you've done for me, but, you know, our friendship has grown these past years. So, you know, I'm gonna miss the times that we just talk about other things. So, but, you know, our cross, our paths will cross again, I'm sure, as time goes on. Welcome back whenever you can. I still gotta try to beat you yet on the golf course. So, you gotta certainly come back and give me a shout to do that. So, but, you know, best wishes. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Molly?
Nothing new from what I said last time. I really do appreciate your time here and mentoring me. It's, it's been great, Joel. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Yes.
Of course, Joel, congratulations on your new position. As unhappy as I maybe am about it, I too appreciated everything that you did and all the hand-holding over the past five years, for myself especially. Going to a bigger community, I don't think there's gonna be enough time for the phone calls that many of us have gotten used to, but always very helpful. And thank you for, for sharing your expertise with us for these years. I also wanted to congratulate Kevin and your department and thank all of our city staff for, for your award, the honor.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. And thankful for the opportunity to go to the AMP conference. Last week was a, was a great conference and learned a lot and made a lot of good connections, I think.
Thank you. Ross?
It's hard to add what already hasn't been said. I can't believe this day is already here. Sadly, you know, last council meeting with you, but just thank you for, for everything, conversations, talking through situations with me. I was so ignorant, still very ignorant in this position, but I feel like every conversation I had with you was one step closer to competency. So, I appreciate that. But best of luck to you and to your family.
Thanks.
Obviously, I echo everything there. I'll just add a little bit, you know, not knowing you and we kinda grew up in the same neighborhood a little bit. And I didn't know this until Joel started working here. My sister saw in, on the Toledo news that somebody was leaving City of Toledo and going to Napoleon. And my sister called me and said, "Hey, that guy Joel Mazer you guys just hired, I used to babysit him." And his nickname was JoJo. And I kept that to myself. I thought, now's the time to talk about it. So I talked to my sister about, you know, what should I know about this guy? You know, so I won't share some of the things that she talked about when she was your babysitter. But obviously, you know, Joel and I and your family became, you know, very good friends. And we'll stay that way. Gonna miss you here in Napoleon, but see you back in Toledo area and Oregon. Thank you. Jason?
Need to reappoint Cheryl Hirschberger to the Board of Commissioners of the Henry Metropolitan Housing Authority. If I could do that.
Make the motion?
Second.
Marissa, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, Kevin, we talked about this a little bit before about that award and what that means for your department. And that's just great that your department continues that, the high level, you know, that's a really, really high, high bar to achieve. We appreciate all, all the work that they do. And also the department heads, you know, making sure that they're watching their records as well. It's a team, team effort. You're blamed for stuff that you may not have control of, you also get credit sometimes, but it's just a really great team effort to continue to pull those, those numbers together. And they're so full of information. The Kaffers are just unbelievable to first off, so I really, really appreciate that. So, you know, a little earlier tonight, we talked about the look application for Familia Guerrero. And they're going out to Scott Street. And you start thinking about how much Scott Street has changed, you know, from the Lasses all the way out through Knights Inn. You know, Knights Inn does a little work that Billy and Chief Mack and Chief O'Brien did, that's changing hands. And, you know, the Familia is changing. We also have a main stop getting ready to open up here. There's a Dunkin' Donuts or, excuse me, sorry, sorry, Dunkin'. Dunkin' Donuts salad, I guess. You know, that, that's getting ready to open up. There's a big, big coffee that's, you know, laying block, looking more and more like a building every, every day. Anything grows. Is in the Fastenal building. There's a new realty office back in the same building as Wildcat Barber. I think Dan talked about Knights Inn. I'm sure there's someone, one or two things that I'm forgetting in there. But, you know, talked about all the great stuff that we have going on, and I completely agree with what Joel was saying is about, you know, we have a lot of positive momentum right now. So we gotta just kinda keep, keep our foot on the pedal and keep, keep moving forward. So, it wasn't that way when we got here, but that's a lot of hard work that you did, a lot of extra time that you put in. A lot of phone calls. I don't know how many. I'm glad phone plans are up by the minute anymore. And I'm sure you are too.
Yeah.
Because I know you burn up a lot of minutes and a lot of charges and those kinds of things. So really appreciate everything, Joel, and we're gonna, we're gonna miss you. So thank you, thanks again. And best of luck to you and Amanda and the boys. And don't be a stranger, you know. You know our schedule pretty well around here, so we'll see you soon.
Yeah, thank you. Connor?
Dan?
Yeah, Joel, we definitely hate to see you leave, but we totally understand why. We wish you the best. But, you know, you were talking about the collaboration, not just with the schools, but the agencies and the businesses. And I just think that, that has been so important. And hopefully whoever replaces you can continue that because the teamwork is, I think, extremely important for the success of this community. And you talked about being in, not from Napoleon, and well, neither am I. But this community is very similar to where I grew up. But yet, things like with this council, we are a mixture of Napoleon natives and people that came from outside of here. And I think that makes for an excellent team. And so hopefully this strategy that you partake in can continue on this council and in this community. Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ken?
Yeah, I get to watch the last meeting from California. That was nice. Congratulations, Joel. Good luck.
Thank you.
Dr. Dave?
Boy, it's kinda hard what to say. Everybody's said everything good about the guy. But one of the things you do notice is a lot of the comments about Joel's ability to build relationships. He has done a fantastic job for the city of Napoleon. His knowledge about Brownfield and some of the great discussions we've had. He's led us through several, just large projects. And I appreciate his leadership and his knowledge. He took the time to help explain some of the things that I didn't quite know. We had some very good discussions. Very much appreciate it. And also, I'm so glad, thank you very much for your dedication in winning that award. Yes, it's built upon everything behind, but we needed somebody who was competent and able to step into the role. You've done that, and I appreciate you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Billy?
Best of luck to Joel.
Thank you.
Have fun. Let's come back. I'd like to point out, I don't know that we've appointed an acting.
I caught that too. Thank you.
And just a point of order, sorry. And I don't know, depending on what council decides regarding that appointment, it may or may not take legislation. I don't know if there's going to be internal appointment where further compensation is discussed. And if that's, if that's the situation, we will need legislation.
Okay. I'd like to have a discussion in executive session first, come back out and then finish that up. That's okay? Joel?
Wait, how do I, what do I say? Just nothing? No, I did wanna point out one thing. I did mention that my, my family and I were very much touched by this community. Something that we'll never forget, and we definitely won't be strangers. So, you know, for once, it would, it'll be nice to come back and just enjoy what goes on in this community, the events, or whether it's just on our own. You know, without the pressures of, of the role of city manager too. So, this community does a very good job of taking care of people. And, and, gosh, it's just, you know, the word, that, you know, you, you wanna cherish what you have and keep the growth going, but, you know, you also wanna kinda keep it. You wanna kinda bottle that somehow, you know, and it's, it's really nice. And I think this, this community has a lot to offer to people that are both from here and not from here. So, if anybody ever says, "There's nothing to do in Napoleon," or that there's, you know, something wrong, or, you know, come talk to me, because this, this place has it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I need to add a second?
So, yeah, I mean, this, I guess, the first one's collective bargaining under personnel. The second one, I would imagine, would be under compensation of personnel.
Exactly. That's what I was gonna say as well. Great minds think alike.
Yeah.
Alright, could I have a motion to go into executive session for personnel of collective bargaining?
Sub moved.
Second.
Marissa, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Yes.
And could I have a motion to go into executive session for personnel compensation of personnel?
Sub moved.
Second.
Okay. Marissa, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that what it's saying for your job?
Yes, I know I'm on a folding chair for a while. I guess Christmas is gonna come a little early.
Okay. Could I have a motion to come out of executive session for personnel of collective bargaining?
Sub moved.
Second.
Third.
Okay, and that one, no action taken. Pardon me? Does Marissa have to call the roll? Yep. And please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Yes.
Let me just make sure, then I'll come out of the executive section for the other, no action taken then.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion to come out of the executive session for compensation of personnel?
Sub moved.
Marissa, please call the roll.
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright. Could I have a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation to enter into a new bargaining unit agreement with the Napoleon IA, is that Fire Department? IUPA?
Police Department. Or IUPA?
Sub moved.
What's the piece for?
Second.
You got a first and a second already. It's, you're in good shape.
Alright. Marissa, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, and have a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation to enter into a new bargaining unit agreement with the NA, the Napoleon IAFF.
Sub moved.
Second.
Marissa, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Thank you. And we also need a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation to enter, or to...
Appoint?
Appoint Chad Luff as the interim city manager with a pay increase of $400 per week.
Sub moved.
Second.
Marissa, please call the roll.